Okay, the time's four o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. One A, roll call and possible action on the excuse of any absent member of the governing body.
Mr. Andres Hernandez.
President.
Saro Huardo.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Iza Flores.
Present.
We do have a court.
Thank you.
Thank you. One B, pledge of allegiance and invocation by Annalise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority in God. Please guide us during this difficult time to be the leaders your people need. We ask this in the strong and loving name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Next item, public testimony. Anybody sign up, Huardo? Thank you. Item number three, city manager reports. Submission of sales tax collection report for May 2020. Yes, sir. This is the first month that we're looking at, which is actually March of 2020 of the COVID crisis. It was like the last week and a half of the month. The, the good news is year-to-date, it is up, still up. We're still positive 2.84%. Well, we are down .86 from this time last year. So we're still positive, which is a good note. Submission of property tax collection reports in your packet. Tax selection rolls are still on track. Any questions for the finance director? She's in the audience. I thought she was. Financial quarterly report, period ended in March 2020. Yes, sir. There are quarterly reports in your packet. All funds are still on track as per the budget. Nothing to really report out of the report. And D, submission of second quarter 2019-2020 city far investment reports. Yes, sir. This is our investments. The city's investments are at $102,621,205. All funds appear to be doing good. Number four, consent agenda. There's only one, two items in consent agenda. They're routine, non-controversial. You can do them in one motion if you so choose.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Five, ordinance resolution five A, consideration action, if any, and ordinance waiving renewal fees for condition use permits for on-permission consumption and health permit renewals. Yes, sir. This is another act the city is undertaking to help with the COVID crisis and to help the businesses. We're looking to waive for 90 calendar days any renewal of any condition use permits for alcohol, or any for that matter, for businesses and the health permits. It's a total of about $14,000 we'd give up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes.
Thank you. Five B, consideration action funding resolution. Executing an advance funding agreement for AFA for Texas Department of Transportation for the commercial vehicle staging area. Yes, sir. This is the second meeting we're gonna have. All the AFAs for B, C, and D are still gonna remain tabled. We have not got the new AFAs from Techstat yet.
Where's Omar?
He's digitally on the, on the, can you bring him up? On the go meeting, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay, let's keep going. We'll come back.
Yes, we can come back to it. Thank you, Jose. Five E, consideration action and resolution appointing, reappointing one member to the community development council. This is the CDPG council. Rene Cantu is existing member. He's wishing to be reappointed. Staff is recommending approval.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Yes, sir. Five F, consideration action of funding and resolution entering into an agreement with the Tech Department of Transportation for the closure of US 281, which is Cage Boulevard from Old Business City 3 to Kelly Avenue, for the installation of various decorative light poles in front of City Hall beginning the week of May 25th. Yes, sir. This is to finally finish the project of the downtown lighting, the poles that span across 281. There's, I believe, five more poles coming in, and we're looking at them to be the week of the 25th. We'll be shutting down, down the lanes at a time, northbound and southbound.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Are you gonna include the PSJ route of traffic that's coming up that they requested for? It's at the same time period, is it not?
Don't know off the top of my head. But yes, sir, we will accommodate it.
Yeah, look on your phone. It's a, make sure that the public understands that we, you've approved it.
Yes, sir. May 29th. Yes, sir. It's the same week.
Same week. So are we gonna have another commission meeting before that?
No, sir, we will not.
Okay, so it's, so we'll come, we'll come back and talk about it at the end, then make sure that people understand that you, you did approve it. You were asked on Wednesday, and you signed it off on Wednesday. So you send it back to PSG leadership.
Yes, sir. We do. We have that email.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So we'll address that at the end of the meeting when the slides come up. Back to agenda six, administrative, six A, consideration action, if any. Authorize the city manager to advertise for competitive seal proposals for the City of Far and National Bridge facility expansion renovations phase two, project number 192070510C009-775. Yes, sir. If you remember, Mayor Commissioners, a couple of meetings back, we approved the architect to additional monies to do these improvements. The improvements came in at $500,000 to $600,000. This is an unbudgeted item. This goes beyond the scope of the original bridge project. We're gonna come with you next meeting for a budget amendment to the budget. But in order to be fiscally responsible, we did have to cut a project. So we are proposing to cut north Raiders Drive from Sioux Road to Owasso Road and do that next year instead of this year. So we can make budget for this.
And what exactly is the scope of this work?
This is the additional work that they want in the front to do the air handling in the front, the grand front entrance.
Right.
And the generator pad and some other stuff.
That we, that we did not plan for before.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I understand. Now, if we so decide, just for clarification, and we have our budget reinstated with, after the next funding from the feds, then we will reinstate that project for, for the, what was it, what was it called?
It's the North, North Raider Drive project.
North Raider Drive project. Okay. So we'll still, we still can physically, possibly do that this year.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion.
Oh.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sorry. Any further discussions? Sorry about that. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Administrative B, consideration action, if any, authorize the city manager to solicit a scope and fee proposal from half associates and negotiate and enter into a contract for the master planning and design of operational improvements at the Far National Bridge, project number 1920015288013. Yes, sir. We are asking to do a master plan for some bridge projects that CBP has asked us to do. CPAD and the Fast Lane on our bridge. So we wanna master plan those so they all come out accordingly. Staff is recommending half associates from the rotation list. So move.
Second. I have a question.
Yes, sir. Commissioner.
I know that you just determined on the rotational list, but how did you determine this company was better than the rest?
So half, there's a couple of people that, or a couple of firms that work real good with CBP and with government project. Half an associates have already done projects with CBP. They're comfortable with them. That's how they were picked.
So they have, they have to have qualifications to do these type of projects to begin with. It can't just be any engineer, per se.
No, they have to be vetted with, with the feds.
Oh.
And they have already done other workforce?
Yes, sir. They've already done a workforce on the bridge. So they're very familiar with the bridge right now.
Okay. Any further discussion? Cause all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Administrative C, presentation discussion of FAR COVID-19 Disaster Recovery Center. Yes, sir. So let me set it up. You know, we're still in the pandemic. We're in the recovery stage of the COVID-19. Two weeks ago, we shut down our 301 COVID center. We're gonna transition that phone number and that identity to our recovery center. It's gonna be at the FAR Event Center, and Karina's gonna come up and give you a small presentation on it.
Great.
Shouldn't be more than 10 minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Karina Lopez, for the record, interim, interim chamber president. I don't know if they're gonna have the presentation above, or if you guys have it available.
Yes.
So the idea was, we, we, sorry about that.
This one.
Yes, sir. Everybody should have it, but they're supposed to put on the.
It's supposed to be online as well, for the public to see. Do you have it online? Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, so it'll be called the FAR COVID-19 Recovery Center. The idea behind the center is that we wanted to kind of bridge that gap for individuals and businesses that are currently seeking assistance, whether it be financial or regular resources that they need in order to move forward with the recovery process. I know right now, we are kind of in the stages of 25% operational, and then, of course, we're increasing. And in addition, we're opening more industries than what we have available. I know today, additional industries are gonna be open. So the idea here is that we wanna make sure that we provide resources for these businesses to ensure that they're abiding by the CDC guidelines, as well as city mandates that we are requiring of them in order to move forward successfully. On the second page, if you guys are following along, you're gonna see the event center layout. And so the event center layout, pretty much, we're gonna be working with 10 individual staff members that are gonna be assisting in kind of like a setup for business advisement. And so from there, maybe turn the page. Our timeline is pretty, pretty much set that we are set to open the center this Wednesday. Hours of operation will be Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. to accommodate those that are closed after 5:00 p.m. They need additional resources after 5:00. And then, of course, Saturday, we are gonna have a small gap from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for those that are, of course, are working Monday through Friday. Depending on the need of the businesses, we'll go ahead and be able to either increase or reduce staff depending on the needs. These individuals are currently being trained on an overview of the certain organizations or partners that we work with on a daily basis to ensure that businesses are getting the pertinent information for updates. And of course, some of our partners that we had presentations from today, of course, were the Small Business Administration, Small Business Development Center, Work for Solutions. And we've also already had some of our city departments go out there and give an overview of what mandates are being requested from the businesses for the recovery period and to ensure that they are opening the correct way. In addition, information that we will have available for them are lending programs. So I know right now, one of the biggest things is that businesses are facing the loss of financial assistance. So our goal is to make sure that if in case they haven't applied for certain programs that are available either through federal or state, they have the opportunity to do that right now. In addition, I know that the City of FAR was also gonna be rolling out some programs. The idea is that we're gonna have the information guidelines and how to apply available at the resource center where they're able to print out any of their statements or any financial information. I'm sorry, it's, I can't breathe.
Thank you.
For them to print out information pertinent to their business in order to make sure that they have what the city is asking from them for the loan itself. And so in addition to that, we'll also have additional information, Work for Solutions for employment, for getting the employees back on the road to hiring full-time jobs. And of course, this is all gonna be available to the City of FAR businesses and, of course, residents. We are asking that it is appointment preferred, but we will not turn away anybody. Our goal is just to kind of make sure that we're all keeping aligned with the health regulations. We will offer additional resources also that we have with our partners and for marketing assistance or questions that they may, may have in other areas. If we can't have the answer there, obviously, our goal is to connect them with the resource or the partner that will get them, that information for them. We will have appointments via person, and we will also be taking calls as well.
So let me add real quick. One thing we wanna make sure the public understands, we're not leaving anybody out in the cold. We're gonna answer all questions. Like Karina said, if there's an agency, like they wanna go to workforce, we're gonna make sure while they're there, we're gonna call, we're gonna make the appointment for them so they can go to the workforce. Rather than tell them, go see workforce, here's the address. We're gonna make sure it gets done.
So one stop shop.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Correct. And so once you're there, we're gonna go ahead and be able to provide information regarding the, of course, the city financial assistance and the assistance that's gonna be readily available for the residents, once it becomes available. Any questions?
Is that it? Is that your presentation? Of course, I mean, Commissioner Carrillo, yes, go ahead.
Is this gonna be on a first-come, first-served basis, or what?
On the financial standpoint, yes. It'll be on a first-come, first-served basis. And of course, it'll be following the model that the EDC has set aside for the lending application.
And that's for the CDPG funding also?
To my understanding, yes.
Combined.
It's gonna be combined though? Yes, sir. So I don't know if we can get the slides up.
That's what we're gonna introduce before we're introduced by Commissioner Carrillo, but that's okay. You wanna clarify that? There, Wiley.
Yes, sir. Can we get the, the slide that shows the monies up, please?
It's up great.
Oh, there it is. I'm sorry.
So hold on a second.
Yes, sir.
So remember, this is our intent to make sure we help all our city businesses. We anticipate using some of the funds that are mandated through CARES Act to the county and then to the cities. It's an order of 151 million that the county got, and it's supposed to be dispersed to the cities. And Wiley has put together this program with EDC in the chamber. It's gonna be one program, one pot of money, so to speak, as we discussed. And it will be held at the event center, as you guys have planned out already. And the criteria's been set, and it'll be put, put online so everybody can see and be able to go through it. The only commentary I had was, I just wanna be sure that, I know you guys wanna go by appointment, and that, that's nice. But sometimes life doesn't work that way. So we don't want you turning anybody away.
Yeah, and we don't know.
If you have to stay later than seven, then so be it.
Definitely. And we do have a plan set in place if in case that we get an influx of individuals. Our goal is to get their information and have them wait in their vehicle if needed to let them know when we're able to, to see them.
Yes, sir. So, so the benefit we had here is that we already had the 301 center. Everybody's valuable, as we all know, but there are some employees that, that shine throughout, throughout an emergency. We did pick those employees that really did shine out in the 301 center to manage this one. They understand the customer service. They, they understand what the public's going through. They have that empathy. So they've always understood, and same thing with 301 center. We had to stay late because we had a flood of calls. They stayed late. They stayed till 10, 11 o'clock. We're not gonna shut down if there's people out there that need assistance. Going back to the slide, we are putting in a total of $865,000 to start off this initiative. 300 from EDC and 565 from, from the city. It's gonna cover everything from rent, utilities. We're gonna connect them with, with the paycheck protection, all the government entities. If you can see from the posters and the, and the advertisers gonna go out, we're famous for our bridge. That's the philosophy we're taking. We're here, we're gonna bridge the gap between now and what people are gonna get in government assistance. We're gonna, we're gonna sit down with them, make them apply, or not make them apply. Help them apply online. That way, don't leave, they didn't get any help. Whatever the projected date is for that money that they're gonna get from the government, we're gonna fill that gap. We want them to stay open right now. We want them to stay viable. We want them to stay open for now and for the future. That's all we're doing. It's as simple as that. We're just bridging that gap to make sure the businesses stay viable and open. So it's like, someone's gonna get pro-rated to amount of employees they have, or they're going to, I mean, like, we're gonna give $50,000 for utility, interesting, right? Yes, sir. Obviously, we're not gonna go pay somebody electric bill, but they, they were there, like, electric bill we pro-rated. Just so people can know they're gonna be, well, no problem, why are you, are you not gonna lose?
That's what we wanna put all the criteria online to read.
Pro-rated because, well, this company has 50 employees. This one has three. Yes, sir. Yeah, every, every plan is gonna be customized to that business. It has to be. We can't, we can't be so stringent that this is how it is, and we can't be so lax, because everybody gets everything. It's, it's gonna come, they've been trained since last week. We're gonna do the final, final walkthrough of everything tomorrow to open Wednesday. But yeah, it's, the reason we picked these employees is they have common sense. They understand the people. They're gonna say, well, am I gonna give you $50,000 when all you need is $5,000?
Yeah, so the employees are gonna be following the guidelines that are being put out by the, I guess, the restrictions that are gonna be placed in, for the lending programs, whichever they may be. So pretty much, they're just gonna be following that, and they're just gonna receive further guidance from the specific department who's overseeing the entire program.
I guarantee you, we're gonna get the calls.
Yes, sir.
From the businesses.
Here. Can we show Huardo?
Just one more, more, one point of clarification. This program is specifically designed for companies with 25 employees or less. Correct?
I don't believe it was 25 or less.
Yeah, we didn't set, we didn't set a number to it.
Just discussed it.
No, those were Victor's criterias, as far as his money. Our, our money, we're not gonna discriminate. You know, the, the businesses that are bigger businesses, the financials, that's why they're bringing in financials. The financial shows that they were doing fine before the crisis, then, you know, it all depends on what it shows. We're catering to the small business. But we didn't set a criteria of 25 or less, or 50 or less, or, we wanna get the flood of people in and try to help who we can.
Yeah, so they're at the center. We're not gonna be the, the defining person or that's gonna say you're approved or not approved. We're gonna get them, obviously, to get all the information needed for that loan to be finalized. And then, of course, you are gonna have the individuals that are gonna be overseeing the approval process for the lending.
What we're saying, Karina, is that you were not privy to information, is that we, we discussed this in another meeting, and the fact that we want one program, one set of criterias.
Okay.
And so we need to merge, and we, we have given a mandate to merge the Chamber, EDC, FAR, whatever programs there are, into one.
Okay.
So don't put anything up online yet until we have merged the specific criteria on how to get it. Because then there's gonna be confusion, as Commissioner Huardo, and of course, Bobby has already pointed out, we, we don't want confusion.
Sure, yeah.
So make sure.
A small business doesn't mean 25 or less, because remember, some businesses open 24 hours. So they carry three shifts. Just by having 10 people in each shift, that's 30 people that you have. So you would kill somebody with that type of, no, we understand. So I think it needs to be looked at a little closer.
Yes. Anybody else have any questions?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
I saw a lot of your partners that are gonna be working with you, or, you know, as far as resources. If a person comes in just wanting to help, you know, fill out an application, do you have people with accounting experience, finance, to help them navigate through all that?
No. So the idea is that we're gonna get them connected directly with a business advisor who is actually specialized in the area, and they're gonna go ahead and walk them through the process.
Okay. Didn't you guys recently speak to, I don't know if you did or Cindy, Texas A&amp;M?
Yes, yes. So they're also gonna work as an SBDC, kind of like similar, the services that SBDC provides. And I am in contact with them, so they will also be an assisting partner through this.
In this endeavor. So will they be at the FAR EDC?
No, so even.
I mean, FAR Event Center?
No, so even the organizations that are listed on here, right now, they're currently working remotely. So even if we are getting them connected, it's gonna be remotely. We are gonna have an area that's gonna have access to computers, and the idea is that even if we do get them connected remotely, they'll have access to a computer where they can communicate with this advisor.
And IT is prepared to do that? You have everything in play? Okay. Anybody have any other commentary or questions? No? Is this the next item, or? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. Great job.
Six D, consideration action, if any, authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with GDJ Engineering for the list of qualified firms to provide an assessment of project development for a priority plan for the city's transportation projects. Yes, sir. The MPO has a lot of money out there. We wanna be prepared for this money coming down. This firm is gonna develop a list of projects viable for MPO funding. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Contracts and agreement seven A, consideration action, if any, authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract with Millennium Engineers Group, Inc. For construction material testing for the Far National Bridge FY15 DAP Northbound Lane SCJ 0921-02-35 and the second BSIF exit project SCJ 0921-02-383. Yes, sir. These are requirements to do the materials testing for the projects. The estimated amount is $50,142.63. Staff is recommending approval. So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Where's this engineering firm from?
Millennium is out of Edinburgh, I believe. They're low, FAR, out of FAR.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, they've, they've been around for a while. They've done a lot of our testing.
Good.
Can you come up here a while?
Well, there you are.
Captain, Mayor Commissioner Omaran Saldoa said engineer for the record.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you're using, and I'm glad there's, first of all, vendors that are from FAR, and they're qualified vendors. And thank you for, hopefully, they got, they were given the same courtesy everybody else, and they were awarded as good. When it comes to the AFAs, where are we with Techstat? Pete, where are we with that deal?
They haven't given us the AFAs for the three projects. It's been, it's been about three weeks or, or more.
Have you had discussions with them again?
Yes, we, we asked the status. They said it's with Austin, contract review team in Austin, Techstat. And so they haven't, we followed up last week, I think, and they haven't given us a timeline as to when, you know, when we'll be able to get them back. And they haven't given us a firm date on that.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. I don't know, somebody else?
Thank you, Omar.
Thank you.
Thank you, boss.
Seven B, consideration action, if any, on interlocal agreement between the City of FAR. We didn't vote on any. I apologize.
Okay. We have motion for approval?
For the engineer? Seven A, yes, sir.
Oh, we're, we're in discussion. Okay, I'm sorry. We need a second, you said?
Somebody made a motion already.
We voted the second, now we need a vote.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven B, consideration action, if any, on interlocal agreement between the City of FAR and the City of San Juan for dual certification of sanitary sewer. So yes, Mayor Commissioners, through the diligent efforts of the mayor, we have finally got an agreement with San Juan. This is the first step to getting our ETJ and their city limits and ETJ squared away. This will give us dual certification to roughly 15,000 acres south of the floodway and east of I Road, all the way up to Tower Road. The people have a choice to choose either FAR or San Juan.
So both cities have the ability to make money?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Cause it refers to, here to item A, but it didn't have it on my agenda. What item J? Item A is it referring to, Exhibit A, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's the actual contract. It was uploaded. Yeah, it was uploaded in the packet.
So item A is referring to all this, because I was looking for something that said item A, or Exhibit A, 19.
Well, the exhibit, well, if it's, if you talk about the exhibit in the contract, that's the map.
It says, it says referring, the service area identified as Exhibit A.
Yes, it's, let me get you the thing. Let me see. Give me one second. It's there. It's, it's the map, Commissioner, the ETJ map.
Of all the 15,000 acres?
Of all the 15,000 acres, yes, sir.
I was looking for, and I said, well, what are we referring to against?
Yeah, the entire ETJ.
It's the last, the last, the last sheet on the interlocal.
Anything else? Okay. Motion for approval, please?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Contracts and agreement seven C, consideration action, if any, on interlocal agreements in the City of FAR and City of San Juan for paving and traffic loops. Yes, sir. This is another local with San Juan. We're doing some loop improvements for the traffic lights along I Road. Naturally, some of the loops go on the intersections into the San Juan city limits. So in order for us to fix the loops, we need to pave the road. So we're gonna pave the first 100 feet of San Juan city limits on certain roads.
So, so it'll be even?
Yes, sir. So the loops will work correctly.
Okay. And that's in kind?
So move.
In kind?
Well, that's our, our cost.
Yeah. So it's in kind for San Juan, the, your San Juan city.
Yes, we're in kind for their, for their improvements, yes, sir.
Okay. No problem.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, they, they wanted City San Juan also to piggyback on our contractor at their cost to pave an additional beyond the 100 feet to get a complete road.
Okay. That's up to that.
We might amend it.
Sure. We don't have a problem with it, as long as they pay their bill.
Yes, sir.
That's fine.
So move.
Okay. Do a second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Seven D, consideration action, if any, authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Kronos. How do you say this, Jose?
Sashur.
Sashur? Okay, whatever. Sashur Incorporated for subscription services for the workforce, ready cloud time and attendance software. Project number 192001518S038201. Yes, sir. This is a contract to upgrade our Kronos. The old Kronos uses Java. This no longer uses Java. This will be cloud-based. At the time, the, the attorney has some changes, so we're gonna make the motion contingent on the attorney. Attorney reviewing the changes. So move.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner.
How much are we paying right now? Cause this says we're gonna pay $46,000 for maintenance.
Yes, sir, we're gonna.
How much are we paying now?
Jose?
Hello, Commissioner. Jose Pena, IT Director. We're currently paying $25,000 for annual maintenance on the product, but our hardware, our, the actual time clocks that employees clock in on do not have support. And, and like we mentioned, we need to get off of the product, product that we use today prior to December, because that's when the, the other third-party programs are no longer supported. So this is the option to kind of move forward.
So the previous contract didn't allow for, or the city, for whatever reason, didn't purchase a service agreement with it before?
Correct. There was a separate third-party or a separate agreement for the time clock maintenance. But again, due to the age of the products, some clocks were not really meant to, to, it was easier to replace them. It was easier to replace them, you know, than to try to fix all the physical devices. But again, the actual software is up, the database, that, that product, again, is out of life and we only have two options. The option that we move to the cloud helps us because we now are no longer tied to managerial licenses by unique. Like we have eighty users that approve time sheets. Sorry, in the cloud, any user can do time sheets. And then any employee can submit time off request to their computer as opposed to standing on the clock. Now they get less usage because a lot of it costs their upstream, so that's what tends to go down on the clock.
Okay, so it's up-to-date software and material. Any, any other concerns or questions?
That's it.
No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Seven E, Consideration Action, if any, entering to an enterprise agreement with Charter Communications Operating LLC as spectrum for the city's high-definition public access channel, project number nineteen twenty zero one, five one eight, S zero three nine dash zero zero one. Yes, sir, Mayor Commissioners, as you know, we have a public access channel, a city of FAR channel that's in, I believe, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred channel on spectrum. It's an old channel. The charter spectrum does not support the channel any longer since it's a free channel. So now we have to go to an enterprise channel and actually pay for it. It's more trouble dealing with spectrum to get it fixed since it's not supported than the free service we get. So we're looking, we're entertaining or asking you to approve a contract for an enterprise account in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars a year and also subject to city attorney approval. So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Consideration Action, if any, on final closeout and amendment for additional scope of work and time for Newcombe Park Phase One and Two. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, if you see Newcombe Park, north and south side, it's almost ready to go. Fences came down last week. Grass is being planted. Trees are up. It's drastically changed from the initial plan we had when we first started the project. We've been able to absorb some costs in the, in the original contract, but we're still going to have an amendment. They were much needed. There were good changes that needed to be done, so we're recommending a contract amendment amount of two hundred sixty-four thousand, six seventy-six with ninety-six cents and close out the project.
Are we under, when we first started all these projects, there was a budget we had reviewed. Are we still under that budget?
Yes, sir. The initial budget for everything was nineteen million, so we're, we're good.
I don't want the vendor coming back asking if he's got more money.
He's done. He's done already. It's the last one.
Yeah, but this and this, is that like a change order?
It's an amendment to the contract, change orders or for things that we found out that didn't have, that, that came up unexpectedly or somebody missed. These were additions that we added to make the park better. So move.
Second.
Also, for clarification, maybe, maybe you guys are smarter than me, but I didn't realize that they were called the Newcombe Park. I thought we hadn't labeled them yet as, I know you referred to them as Newcombe Park, but unless you guys voted on, I don't remember, but I thought we still had the option to, to name these parks and we hadn't decided yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they haven't been dedicated yet or not, so until we're open, we'll do a dedication plan.
I just want to be sure. All in favor? Yes. Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item seven G, Consideration Action, if any, on final closeout and amendment for additional scope of work and time for the Jose Pape Salle the Civic Center. Yes, sir. This is also the same thing. If you remember, like the mayor said, we had a proposed budget. We came in with a construction manager that came in after the fact when the plans were done. There was some value engineering done because we did score and price the budget a little low. Throughout the process, some of the value engineering didn't work out. Lights didn't match up. You would have gone to one room, it was darker than the other, stuff like that. So we had to make some changes on the fly to make sure that the, we did get a quality product. The difference is a, an amendment of five hundred eighty-five thousand, four sixty-two. That was recommended approval.
And this is still part of that bond issue that we sent. Again, we're in our budget.
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We're doing one executive session.
Oh, we're going to do an executive session. I'm sorry. In accord, in accordance with section five five one point zero seven one to five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas Government Code, the Forward Bar, Forward, excuse me, Forward Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is commending to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being four thirty-five. Time is five oh three.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Back eight, eight, eight eight, South Consultation with City Attorney on the Invention LLC versus the city of FAR, Texas Cause Number C three two zero five dash sixteen dash E and the twenty-seventh correction, two hundred seventy-five Judicial District Court of Dow County, Texas. This was just an advisory, so no action is needed.
Okay, great. The last thing before we close out, as you know, with the COVID-19, the school districts are all planning and the graduations are all doing it differently for the, there's been some, some confusion. I've been getting calls from a couple of residents from PSJ and I want to make sure they understand that. There is a post that was created by the school district that's on, on the website now. This is what they officially have posted of what's going to be happening. We're not aware of this, of this post, but we have, we, we saw this and I just want to make sure people understand, this is what they have posted. It has nothing to do with city of FAR. We don't tell PSJ how to do their business, how to do their graduation with us. One or two students, three families at the stadium or not, that's their party, so to speak, and we're just here to help them. And so what they sent to us was the following. Can you put that up, please?
Make it bigger.
Yes, this is the letter we received and it's a total of four pages, is that right? And as you can see, this got listed there, revised in the ripe quarter, May twelve of two thousand, twenty twenty, which we got a call by the Superintendent Arredondo who requested this be approved, this plan that they created and for a parade. And we, on that same day, when we were notified, asked our, our city manager to approve it quickly because we certainly don't want to get in the way of any graduations and it's, at the end of the day, it's our party. What route they take, how they conduct their graduation ceremonies, who they allow in, how many people can attend, which, which schools in the city of FAR, we have TSTEM, of course, Raiders North and Southwest. We have no input whatsoever in how this is being done except traffic. And so for the citizens of FAR and who actually attend these schools and PSJ know the city has already agreed to the term that's set before us. There's a little just, a bit of confusion how that's going to be done, but we can't, as a city of FAR, answer those questions on time dates and the specifics for PSJ. That's for their leadership, out of respect to them, that they have to answer those and how it's going to be carried out. But I just wanted to make sure that we post this on the city of FAR webpage and make, make sure we endure a good relationship with PSJ. We, we want it to be a success, but at the end of the day, we're here to, to help them out and they're in charge of their, of their commencement and party. So with that, I just want to make sure that was clarified, that the city of FAR has already signed off on it and we're delighted that they're going to have their graduation, whatever PSJ wants in their favor. Any other commentaries or concerns? No? Otherwise, you have a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We adjourn at five oh seven. Thank you, everybody.